recorded I think, so please know that. Uh we'll start with uh open sessions. Anybody here for open session? No? Okay. And announcements, Katie, you wanna um update us?
Yep, we got a whole bunch of stuff. Um so this is this is all on um the town website under special events by the way, just in case anyone wants to get more info. Um and I will be sending this out in a reverse email hopefully this week because there's a lot of stuff going on this month. So first off, we have October ninth, which is the free movie night at the Rec Field. Uh from the Hubbardson Boy Scouts. They're doing it as a recruitment to help um enlist kids to sign into Cub Scouts. If you don't wanna sign up for Cub Scouts, you're still welcome to come. It's free to all. They're showing Ghostbusters at dusk and they will have a um a snack shack of sorts set up selling, you know, prepackaged items. Um so bring a camp uh camp chairs and blankets and all are welcome. The rain date's the next day, but I'm pretty sure this Saturday is looking very well for the weather, so that should be good. Um.
Have you been up to have you ever gone up there to the movies?
I've put.
I assume you have.
Yeah, me and Chiefy have done a whole bunch of them up there for stuff.
That's cool.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's it's uh it's good. The kids can run around and, you know, not, it's like just have fun and yeah, it's it's a good place to have an outdoor movie, so. Um October sixteenth uh is the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Rec Field Playground at one P M. Um Sando's putting that together with uh parks and they'll have some. I don't know, they're having stuff up there. They haven't, they ha- they don't wanna share too much too early, so just in case. So but there will be at one one P M on October sixteenth. Uh October nineteenth is our special town meeting. I even put that on there. Hey, I got it going on. Yes.
Well, we need a quorum, so I mean, that's tough.
Seven P M um at the at the Hubbardson Center School Gym. So yeah, we got good stuff going on then. And then we got October twenty second, twenty third. We have the Lions are doing the haunted, the Hubbardson Haunted Hay Ride at Rieta Ranch from five thirty to nine. Uh tickets are sold on site, uh and they have they'll have their food truck there. The rain dates are the twenty ninth and thirtieth. They are still looking for skits to my knowledge. Um first prize is like five hundred bucks, so it's definitely worth your while to go to a skit. But it's a fun brawl and if you aren't doing a skit, definitely go and in park uh take part of the the hay ride. October twenty fourth, we have the Hubbardson Scholarship Committee is hosting their annual Harvest Breakfast from eight to eleven at the Rod and Gun. Tickets are sold at the door. And all the money goes back towards the Hubbardson Scholarship Committee. They will be doing their scrambled eggs, pancakes, uh they got bacon and and sausage, you know, all the good stuff. Uh I wanna say it's ten dollars for adults and five for kids under six. So it's definitely a worthy cause and it's a good day to go out and have some breakfast, especially if you've been at the Haunted Hay Ride both nights. Um in the afternoon on the twenty fourth, the time will be announced will be the the Horribles Parade, the little Halloween parade. Um Flo was putting that on again. Um it.
On the twenty fourth?
Yeah, I know, that's why. It's a very busy weekend, that weekend. Um the time's gonna be announced, we're they're trying to work out the details on this, but the kids get dropped off at costumes starting at the main street. And then they walk down and they end at the Hubbardson Center School. And then they'll be having, I guess, a magician show. They're skipping the food this year to my knowledge. But there's some conflict of time, so they're working on time, so follow back with times. Uh as soon as I know times, I'll put them on the the website. And then we have October thirty first, of course, is the Halloween Hoedown from four to eight located at the Hubbardson Town Offices, put on by Bill Shea and the Hubbardson Police Department. And then trick or treating will be that night from five to seven. So that's always fun to check out all the stuff that they got going on over here at the police station if you haven't.
Lions coming again? Lions bringing the trucks?
Yes, yes.
Good.
We'll have hot dogs and stuff like we did.
And and trick or treating is from.
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Yep, yep, five to seven that night.
Donated by uh John at Rieta Ranch has donated me food, hot dogs, rolls and stuff.
Yeah, usually that stuff. Yeah, Rieta John is very, yeah, he contributes to a lot in town. Um and then coming up, we have the Hubbardston Light Fight, which I am officially taking applications and sponsorship for, so if anyone wants to start thinking about that, we're gonna be doing that the first three weekends, 'cause that takes a lot to set up if you're, especially if you're gonna enter into the go big or stay home. And keep in mind, there's going to be less people in the go big or stay home, 'cause Alicia has moved. So and then Lou keeps swearing he's not setting up this year. So if anyone wants to take a jab at it, there will, there's money on the line for it. And I think there's some room to play with people to step it up for that year with people that already decorate and they're like right on the cusp. So anyway, so that's what we got going on, but those are the fir- the light fight is the first three weekends of December. Um.
Why isn't Lou doing it? Can we get to his kids or something?
I just, he keeps trying to sell his lights and he's trying to get me to buy his lights. I'm like, I'm not buying your lights, Lou, I got my own lights. Um but yeah, so he says it's a lot of work. And that's not the direction he wants to go in. He wants to change directions. I told him he's out of his tree and people love his house, so yeah.
Alright, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. Time will tell.
Alright, well that's, is that it?
Yes, that's all so far that I got going on.
Alright, that's great, that's crazy.
Or well, not I, but the town.
Yeah, okay. Alright, anybody else wanna bring anything else up during this topic? No?
On the website.
Alright, thanks Katie.
Yep.
Um minutes consent agenda. Um we don't have any minutes tonight, correct?
Yep.
Um and we have a couple of items on the consent agenda. You can see them in front of you. I'll read them. So the item, the first is the minutes, approval of minutes, there are none. Uh the second uh and third are resignations. The first is Ed Blanchard resigning from the Vietnam Veteran Veterans Memorial Committee. Uh he sent in a letter. And the second uh the uh resignation is uh Joanna Henning resigning from the library due to moving out of town. So um we will uh take action on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll take a I'll make a motion to accept the items as indicated on the consent agenda by unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh are there any holds or or um are there any discussion?
The only discussion is on the library vacancy. We have to follow the process of um Master General law, chapter forty one, section eleven. Whereby we give notice for a week that there's a vacancy and then uh jointly the the trustees and the select board meet and uh fill the position by rule call vote.
Okay, have you been contacted by the trustees yet with any interested parties?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. We'll find more about that soon.
Okay.
Um okay, any further discussion? Nope, seeing none, uh we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Okay, so on to the special town meeting um to set and sign the warrant, uh as Katie said, October nineteenth, seven P M, Hubbardson Center School Gym. Uh how do you wanna start this, David? You wanna give us some uh some some details on any changes from the last time we've seen it?
Uh the only the only changes from last time are the uh the comments made by council and they were editorial in nature. Right now, the select board has not uh made any recommendations for or against any of the articles. So I was hoping that we'd be able to do that tonight, so I can print a copy with, post the copy with your recommendation.
Yeah, sounds good. I think we've had a little time to think about this and we had a long discussion about some of these last week, so uh we've got, what, eight articles? That's the final number?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um okay, well might as well just go through them one by one. We don't have to go through all the details, but um the first is is r- regarding some some prior fiscal year invoices, sort of housekeeping sort of thing. Um so David, would you would you say the best way to go through these is is I should do it like I just did there, go individually through all eight and then um uh you know, make one motion and then during that motion, any discussion about individual uh ones, or should I just, we just do one at a time and say whether or not we uh we we support them or not?
Well, we do one at a time.
Sounds good. I thought that was the answer. As I was starting to explain the process, I think that I was attuned to that as well, so. Okay, well, that's the first article.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. David, it looks like A T and T, so that's a new bill from last time, the forty nine dollars?
Yes.
Was that for like a cell phone or?
Yeah, um. Yeah, that was for a cell phone.
Okay, and are so that one's been added. Do we have any other that we expect to pop up, or do we feel like we've now caught all the prior years?
Well, they were the leftover from from the prior executive assistants, so you haven't found anything else, no. So I think.
Haven't. Okay. It's the last present. Okay.
I hope so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion then that the select would recommend Article One on the uh warrant for the special town meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's unanimous. The second article is um to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer of free cash or take uh from funds available, twenty two thousand one hundred eighty dollars, which is good, two thousand twenty two police department salaries. Take it under your actuality thereto. Uh Chief, you don't have to come up, you can if you want, but there is no one else around, so um this is um, you know, you we've seen your letter. But if you could just go into it a little bit again for for those uh uh, you know, watching and listening?
Sure. So. The 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 goal is, we initially got two openings, one after another, uh back in February, March, whenever all the dust settled. The budgets for all intents and purposes were s- were so submitted already. So this is kind of, our intent was to hire people with full-time academy. As we had done, although it hasn't really worked out, because they stay here all the while and then they find another job somewhere else. We've had better luck actually training from within and hiring from within. So we weren't, we put out, we we did our due diligence, we put out applications, um and uh the timing probably nationally isn't good for us to be hiring people, so normally we'd get thirty to forty applicants. I think we got maybe ten and maybe three of them were moderately qualified, none of them had full-time academy.
Did you um did you list it or uh whatever, uh the word word is, as you normally would?
So we actually went above and beyond what we normally did. We did M M A, we did uh through the po- police chief's website, we did through C G S. So we 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 did three or four different boards in different places. They advertised, I think we even did gardening. Um so with that being said, uh we kinda scrapped that idea, um and we kinda went internally and hired um Officer Sturgis, who's a town resident as well. He had some part-time experience in surrounding departments. So with the intent that, okay, so we could send him to an academy. But before that happened, he came to me with a suggestion that he could attend with the Quinsigment Academy, which started in September. Was a night and weekend academy. He said he'd forego, he signed an agreement as a matter of fact, that he would forego go overtime, so he could do this and keep his other job and and whatever and still work full-time. So I said, okay, fine. So this is around the time that all the budgets were done, town meeting was done. So, okay, well, he didn't pass the, he passed the physical aptitude test, but he didn't pass the new Cooper standard test to get into the academy.
So can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. What has been the the law of the land since, for the last fif- forty years has been what's called the physical aptitude test. It's it's various different obstacle course things that you have to pass at a certain time.
Yep.
He did that, but with the new police reform, uh now they're putting down Cooper standard to get into these academies. So Cooper standard is setups, push-ups, a litany of other individual exercises that you have to pass. Um and they're much more stringent. Most states are Cooper standard, um Rhode Island's Cooper standard where I came from, so it was it was inevitable, I guess, once they passed the reform though.
Yep.
So uh he couldn't pass that. Um he was one year be- before changing to the next group in age, so um he's assured me that he could pass it now. So that plan kinda went by the wayside and I found myself having to send him to a six-month academy. There was some talk about bridge academies, but the new system, and to give you a little bit of future look, we have another opening. We have two openings, as I said. The second opening, we have an internal candidate, Kale Fontaine, um who is an F, uh doing A through H for the first year for the Bridge Academy. So she's gonna be attending the Bridge Academy. But the Bridge Academy is, it's an academy to take all part-time officers and get them full-time academy certified. Through online and some in-person stuff. Um so.
How long the program is that?
It's probably gonna go till May or June, I think.
It's gonna start in uh March and end in May, so it's a few months.
So it's a few months, it's four hundred hours, which I had put in for, two hundred hours, which I had put in for additional four hu- four thousand dollars before the budget for uh training. That's to cover that. My intent is to fill that last full-time position with her. She wouldn't have to go to the academy. Um so we'd be able to get away with reaping our investment in her. This position obviously is reliant, this money would pay for this officer's salary while he's away. Now what happens when he's away, right now he's on the eleven to seven shift, my three to eleven guy would be moved to eleven to seven. And the monies used, the purpose of the monies would be to supplement some of these three to eleven shifts, so guys aren't working by themselves. Because currently we have, we're down one full-time position, so anything Saturdays and Sundays is overtime, because that was uh the technical chadney shift as it rolled around, so with that position open, those are always gonna be either overtime or part-time shifts. Uh so it just gives me a little bit more, it gi- it'll give me about sixty-six percent, 'cause it's they're paying time and half, sixty-six percent of the shifts I'd be in to actually fill and and maintain two people at night.
Is there anything, has it been more of a candidate for ARPA than this? I don't, I that's the unanswerable question, you know, but but still, I mean, isn't it, I mean, we we a- again, doesn't really matter for this conversation, but I'm just thinking out loud here, uh you know, we the the applicants are so much less, you know, volume-wise and, you know, sort of making the case on all that. Isn't there some case we can make for this, you think?
Um you could, um you could do it under the um provision for um lost revenue.
Right, something like that. I'm I'm again, I'm just, 'cause we're talking about it, I thought I'd bring that up, but you know, there's monies available for
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
for, you know, hardships and this is one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think we could, you know.
Talking about the Rescue Plan Act, the American Rescue Plan.
Yeah, or, you know, whatever, the the committee we're gonna form to go after all the money that we can do after, that sort of stuff, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just feels like maybe it could be included there.
So that would that would be something that you could um spend money on.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, um alright.
So it just comes down to an awesome safety issue.
Yep.
So strategically, I would fill, um uh I don't wanna say when I would fill, but strategically, I would fill these shifts to afford the more safety uh patrolling of of the officers that work.
Understood. Okay, um can I get further on that?
Uh let's see.
Anyone have any questions for Chief on this item, as far as, you know, the details of it and explanations? No?
Okay, I'll make a motion then that the um select would recommend on the town warrant Article Two.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Any discussion? Chief, you wanna say anything else on it?
Well, I think I said it.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I just gave you one more shot here. Um okay, uh seeing seeing none, we'll vote. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, uh Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the capital stabilization account, or we'll take both. To transfer a hundred thousand for free cash to the general stabilization account, or taking another rule action here too, uh there too. Um David explained this to us and the thought process about it uh as well as uh his conversations with Ryan last meeting. Nothing's changed there, David?
Mm-hmm. No, no, nothing has changed.
Okay.
So that's just bookkeeping, really, right?
Uh yeah, just how we're, you know, sort of moving forward with the free cash we got, I guess.
Yeah. So, okay, I'll make the motion that uh the select would recommend Article Three for the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
I guess?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. Article Four, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, um.
You don't wanna read all that? Come on.
But basically, we are looking at um some additional monies, as I described last week, for the town center project specific to the right-of-way. So we had previously allocated some monies from which there are still some monies left, but we are um smack dab into the right-of-way process now, meaning that all of the letters have gone out to uh butters or property owners, I'm sorry, to to interested parties, property owners, for the work and we're already seeing a fair amount of response on that. And it's feeling like uh that that, whether it be for um you know, additional engineering services, uh or, you know, some other monies that we have to to pay to to get done what we need to get done. We feel like we need some more to be able to um uh access, so it's doesn't guarantee we're gonna spend this money, but I think um, you know, having the access to it is the important part, so that we don't get anything held up. So um that's that's that item.
Any discussion, I think? Not, I'll make a motion that the select board also recommend Article Four for the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Seconded. Uh is there any discussion? Uh seeing none, we'll vote. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, and that is unanimous as well. So we've got some C P A articles now, beginning with Article Five, uh to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-two dollars from accrued community preservation act, undesignated reserve to fund the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two annual debt service obligation for the Rainbow Zen Playground Improvement Project as previously approved under Article Eighteen of June twenty-third, two thousand twenty annual town meeting, or taking any other action relative thereto.
Questions? Make a motion to uh recommend recommend Article Five for the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Uh is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, as recommended. Uh Article Six, I'm also not gonna read all of it, um but uh this this is the item we discussed last week. Uh I am gonna read all of it. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to preserve and rehabilitate the exterior of the historic evangelical church of Hubbardston by funding the removal of the old wood siding and replacement with plank composite system siding, including bell tower and door and window trim, including all costs incidental and relative thereto, related thereto, and to meet this appropriation by transferring fifteen thousand dollars from accrued computer Community Preservation Act historic reserve funds and eighty-five thousand from accrued Community Preservation Act undesignated reserve funds. Uh this grant is conditioned upon the church providing a structural engineering report to Community Preservation Act Committee stating that the church building is structurally sound upon the recording of a historic preservation restriction and the signing of a grant agreement, all prior to the commencement of any work or take any other actions relative thereto. So as explained to us last week, um this is this is from funds currently there and not to borrow. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and so that was on purpose, because to borrow was probably going to be a problem, because banks would not want to touch this
Correct.
um from what was explained to us. So so we've had some time to to noodle on this individually here, um um and and we can decide, you know, anyone wanna talk to it before we?
Yeah, I I another que- just one more question that came up last meeting, I just, so I just wanna be clear for myself on this. Um col- uh council has said that it's it's okay.
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause the legality of it and everything else, okay, so that's the only thing I really wanted to clear about. Does anybody have anything?
I just have, you know, the 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 the, I, the it's just undefined, the whole structural engineering report, church is structurally sound, you know, it's it's still not um it's not very specific, you know, it's just, i- i- it's a really important um article, but but I don't know that all the conditions to it are are specific enough to to um to to make me feel uh, you know, comfortable with it, maybe as written or just overall, so um. I don't know, that that's sort of all I had. It's just a, I mentioned that last week with the engineering report and how much money that would be and exactly um the details on that, so, huh, that was it.
If they had one of those done, how long are they good for, an engineering report?
Uh well, that's sort of impossible to
To say, yeah, I know.
to say, because, you know, you've got the degradation of materials, which is all ongoing all the time, especially for something sort of in that state, you know?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Yeah. Mm.
Um, you know, the the structural, typically the structural portion of that, which which would be the foundation, you know, to start off with anyway, so um if it were in good shape uh that would continue to be in good shape for a while, I would say, but if if, you know, the the support beams and all that stuff that's presumably made out of timber and who knows what condition that is,
Yeah.
that's the sort of stuff that that is um tough to have an answer on.
Yeah, like sills and stuff like that.
Yeah, so.
Both of the library, foundation too, you know.
So. I guess, I mentioned this last time, and I think we're, are we kinda putting the cart ahead of the horse here? I mean, all we're voting on at town meeting is to give them the hundred thousand dollars out of the C P A, correct? But we're only gonna do that, like it says in here, the grant is conditional, that being the grant, right? The money from the C P A is what we're calling the grant. So if the structural support, I mean, if the um, what'd you say, the the structural engineering report comes through negative, then that's it. It's a no-go, right? I mean, we're not committed to giving that money without these conditions being met, right? And the other one was that I mentioned, um us being covered, you know, to get our money back, should we fix up this church and they decide to sell it, right?
Right.
But but they also, they wouldn't be paying for the uh structural engine re- um report, that's my recollection from our last meeting, correct?
So all those things are gonna be.
Yeah, they they.
Around fifty-some odd thousand dollars they're putting up, right?
The church would be on the hook for that.
Yeah, they would be, so. The ultimate decision would be theirs as far as whether they're gonna go ahead with it if they found out that it's gonna be.
Well, the first step is to get the town to even give them this hundred thousand dollars.
Cons- yeah, consider it, yeah.
You know, then if that even passes, then we'll go to step two and we'll talk about these conditions, right? But it seems like we're talking about the conditions before they've even gotten the money to move forward with the project.
Yeah, I I guess I I I hear ya, but the the, I think I could I could find somebody if I wanted to, give me a structural engineering report that said, looks good. So it just doesn't have a lot of, but I could equally find somebody who said, no way. So I just don't know if there's enough detail in in that really critical portion of it, what you're talking about. Um for for us to just, you know, say here's the hundred, just contingent upon satisfying that sentence, you know, uh.
So here's the question.
Well, doesn't coun- isn't council involved in this? Hasn't coun- I'm sorry, is that isn't, hasn't council reviewed this and?
Council has reviewed it.
And they're understanding, they understand our concerns and Dan's concern and my concerns about, huh, then I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the article just gives the the townspeople, the taxpayers, the the notice, so you're gonna be talking about that structure and there are conditions to the money that's gonna go into that structure.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We can tighten the language up in the motion, so long as the motion doesn't depart from the 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 window of the article.
Yeah.
'Cause essentially, we're just right now recommending or not recommending, and, you know, my feeling is to, I like to recommend it and let's see how it plays in front of the town, you know?
I actually agree, and and even though it may not sound like it, I I do agree with that. I just, I I um, I I don't want us to un- unwittingly waste any money. No one does, I know that. I'm just um a little concerned about uh putting that in the hands of people who are receiving the money.
So did they, did I remember saying last week that they've already have a structural engineer study done?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Current?
I, whether it's current or not, I don't know how old it is, that's why I said how long, is there a set time that they're like, oh, no, that's too old? Like, is there a definite? But yeah, no, she uh uh Susan said that they at some point s- had one done, but I, she wasn't sure when it was done.
And what the scope was. The scope matters too. It's like, are we look, you know, based on what we're talking about for repairs here, you know, it it just, there's just a lot of details that matter, that that um
Yeah, exactly.
that are up there.
Well, then could couldn't we put that in the article, based on what Katie was telling us, that it would require an, I, up to date, a new
Is.
um re- structural engineering report, as opposed to relying on a one that's already been done in the past?
I might.
I guess I still don't see why it matters. Why does it matter? It's, what what does it matter? They've gotta give us a current structural report before we release any of these funds to them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the ownership is on them to produce that report to our satisfaction. So we'll put we'll put the article.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it doesn't say to our satisfaction. It doesn't say anything, that's what I'm saying. I was about to just suggest, if it says something in there to the satisfaction of like the building department and the board of selectmen or something, you know, something.
That's fine.
Okay, that's all I meant. You know, something to that effect.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Is is there, so we're getting to the end of building season, if we haven't already arrived there yet, right, with the snow and weather and coming and so forth? Is there any other reason why we couldn't say, let's hold off on this to annual, and then we can at least ask them for their current structural and kinda check out what other language and pieces we can put and what legal counsel would let us put in to the motion or to the article itself for the conditional pieces?
If I could answer a little of that first, I think she actually did say something to the effect of, you know, materials and building commodities are are very fluctuating right now.
No.
Yeah.
To be able to authorize the money now, they could probably acquire a lot of that, even if they couldn't actually put it up. And so they wouldn't be subject to to wild variations in pricing potentially.
Yeah, could put, if we waited a year, well practically, you know, for the annual, could really.
Think they already put a deposit down.
They could make made a difference to this.
I thought my notes say that they would put a deposit, if approved, fifteen K down price to January.
I think they, yeah, they have. I think they, yeah, they have a locked in as a, you know what I mean?
Sorry, David, we were just.
Like, I don't know whether they physically put the the money, the deposit down, um, but it, it was like, the way it was, I understood it being explained is they're locked in. Whether they put the money down right now or not, they're locked in at a price, but I wanna say it sounded like they had already put the money down.
Well, and to Heather's point, that building period is not gonna be building, but I mean, why, assuming this goes through, it would al- at least allow the engineering re- inspection and so forth to to go on, so we could find, get that information, doesn't appear that anything's gonna happen on this until next spring or whatever, assuming it went.
My understanding is that this is town money, therefore to expend it, you know, on a tr- structure like a church, it still has to go through the procurement process. Uh, and so they, it would be in the
Going out to bid.
Going out to bid, but you wo- you wanted to catch construction contractors in February.
Yeah. Early, yeah, early, yeah.
To get the the best price for the project.
Yeah, you've mentioned that many times before here, you know, they get, they work all lined up, they won't take on a smaller project or whatever, but.
Yeah.
And the way the, the way that it was presented last week with Susan was it was, they already have somebody lined up, ready to go, so.
That's a good point though, David, did did you speak to them about that, about, you know, because it would be town funds that they they can't just pick who they want?
I haven't had that conversation with them, I figured that they that they would know that, but I guess it's.
Oh, no, you can never assume anybody knows anything, you know, the, how many times we have this conversation?
Okay, right, alright, so. So I think, so I think I need to be clear, you know, first of all, confirm my my understanding, but, uh, I'm pretty sure that it has to go out to bid, any town funds will.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I guess that brings me back to, so if I remember Sue saying last week that they were gonna put down about a third of the cost of it being a total of one fifty,
Yeah.
I guess my question is, from where did they get that, that cost, right?
She was, she was explaining that to us.
Cookies.
Cookies?
She said like fundraiser.
Fund- fundraiser.
No, they were fundraiser, yeah.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, where did she come up with the, where did the church come up with the idea that the cost is gonna be a hundred and fifty?
Fundraising.
Oh, they got cost estimate.
But I guess my comment is, to David's point, if this has to go through the public procurement costs process, that's not gonna be enough money.
Prevaling wages and all that stuff, right, and engineering, like, right, you you know, that.
So are we really ready with this article, I guess is my question, or are we gonna be coming back to it and supplementing it potentially in the spring?
Where the hell is Susan when you need her? Why didn't she come to this?
Well, she may not know the answer though, because to David's question, I can't for the life of me think of, I I feel it's a very dicey, dicey spot in my brain, on whether it qualifies or not.
Yeah, I know. But she would know at least if they already had, uh, you know, somebody lined up and all this stuff, at least we could get those.
So, what did the playground do? So this is similar to the playground, right?
Yeah, so the playground, they went out to bid.
They went out to bid?
Yeah.
And they had to have a contractor pay prevailing wages to.
But the po- but the playground is an actual town entity, whereas the church is a private entity, does that matter?
No, cuz we
No, it doesn't.
Cuz we did the same thing on a dam in in Hadley, it was privately owned dam that needed to be reconstructed so it wouldn't collapse.
Okay.
And we put a hundred thousand of CPA money in it, and we also got another hundred thousand, hundred fifty thousand from the state.
Mm-hmm.
So, that public money part of it had to be bid out.
I mean, I guess the other option is, David, if you wanted to look up if that was the case, and we could leave this on here and always pass over it at annual town me- or special town meeting if we find out that the public procurement process, in fact, one hundred percent has to be followed, cuz we're gonna be pretty, uh, confident that this number's not gonna be enough.
That would, that would be a safe way of doing it, keeping it on the on the warrant, and then making a, uh, recommendation at the table when we get to a, at the town meeting, if we had to.
Based, based on that information, if assuming, yeah.
Yeah, so. I think Heather's question of where did they get the numbers in the first place is probably gonna drive a lot of thinking on this article.
Okay, well, it's it's gonna be on there, sounds like, so we're gonna have to, um, and and the select board is gonna be below there. So, uh, you know, we're gonna leave it with recommendation pending, or we're gonna say does not recommend as currently or recommends, you know, I think that that's what we have to decide tonight too.
But we haven't meet, don't we usually meet right before the meeting itself?
We do, I don't know if we have it scheduled this time, do we?
That's only if we had to, you know, yeah, yeah.
Well, we might have to, so.
Yeah.
And then we would be able to have whatever information David was able to glean and be able to update that, and then the moderator just reads the recommendation out loud anyway.
Alright, you have you have a meeting, uh, the Monday before the Tuesday.
I'd be.
Yeah, that's what I was like, don't we have one the eighteenth or week?
Cuz personally, I would like to see this be, project happen, just because it, it's come before as before, and it, it's an eyesore, and it's this, you know.
I know, it's just rotting down around us, it's just, I, yeah.
It's, it's, yes, and it's and it's not gonna get any better.
No, it's not.
And it's a historic eighteen twenty seven building, and it's.
But if that number's not gonna touch the actual dollar amount, that's, yeah, I know, like stuck between.
No, no, I'm not, I, I'm, I, I'm in support of everything what you're saying, I just don't wanna make it appear to the town that we're thumbs down again.
I know. Yeah, I know.
And then there goes the project again, and.
I just feel bad.
But it, if we vote, just some throw on scenario there, if we voted for it like this, theoretically, even if it weren't enough, like, it doesn't actually say how much of the exterior, it just says renovate the exterior. So, if a hundred was only good enough to do two thirds of the exterior, would we even want that, or that doesn't make a lot of sense, right? So, we're leaving the door open for that potentially, by letting it go.
Wow. At least, yeah.
Well, the CPC, like hypothetically speaking, say we find out it's two hundred thou- two hundred K, right, instead of one fifty for the total cost.
Yeah.
Then one of a couple of things could happen, the church could either say, okay, well, pony up some more money, or we go back to CPC and they see if they're willing to appropriate a higher amount, and then we come back to annual town meeting, and they revise this instead of fifteen K and eighty five, it's thirty K and eighty five, or whatever it may be. So it's not saying, you know, we're never gonna do this, it's just saying, you know, we wanna make sure, we don't wanna, we don't wanna go back to the townspeople and ask for more money in this project. I think, you know, this could potentially get enough debate the first time, we don't wanna go back the second time, and be like, actually, we need more money for the last side of the building.
Yeah, that's true, I agree with that. Okay, so what have we decided, so first off, you you'll be able to answer some of the, or try to answer some of these questions for us for for our eighteenth meeting?
Yep.
Um, please let us know in advance of that meeting too, um, stuff that you find out, so that we have some time to consider what what, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So are we holding off on recommending it, or are we gonna?
Well, I I think so, I think it makes sense to do that, um, and just decide, as as Heather had said, we can, we can basically just decide that that night and then
And re-recommend it.
Tell, tell, uh, Renee, um, assuming it's gonna be Renee.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, at the, uh, at the town meeting, what our, uh, recommendation is. Are we okay with that plan, everybody?
Can we, can we review the specific concerns, I mean, what what are, what is the concerns, again, please?
So, the first question was where the estimate of a hundred and fifty K total came from for the project.
Okay.
The second concern David raised, which is if public procurement laws apply,
Mm-hmm.
then is this number gonna be sufficient? Because if they, if they met with Bob Contractor, and Bob Contractor said, okay, it'll be a hundred and fifty K, church says they'll pony up fifty, CPC says they'll pony up a hundred K, if we instead have to go to the public procurement process, we know from life's experience that that's probably not gonna be enough.
But we're not sure we have to go to that process, correct?
And that's why we wanna wait.
Well, I'm I'm pretty sure you do.
Okay.
That would be one heck of a loophole if we didn't.
And for example, a private, uh, equipment operator rate is somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty dollars an hour. A prevailing wage rate is now about eighty dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not all of the cost, but but labor for this sort of a thing is a is a large component, maybe forty, fifty percent, so, we're we're talking a significant difference if that's the case.
And then that brings the last concern, that we would be potentially asking the townspeople for not enough money, and having to come back for another bite of the apple.
And what about this, um, we're gonna add the verbiage that me and Dan talked about getting it in there, right?
Yep, the grant is conditioned upon the church providing a structural engineering report, um, to the satisfaction of the building department and the select board, something very simple like that. Um, or or whatever parties, you know, I'm not looking to add forty parties to it, but and and not, you know, I just think that, uh, having a little bit more language in there, um, uh, would 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 be responsible and not, you know, looking to find something, um, a problem, that they'd just, you know, a check and balance.
Well, that will assure people that it's actually structurally sound.
Right.
Rather than this, yeah, it sounds great.
Right.
Sign me up.
So why don't we just add our first two concerns that you just spoke about into the conditional part of it?
And David's writing it down now.
Yeah, we can include that in the motion, or we can.
Maybe we can, let's find out though.
So we can craft the motion to include those specifics.
Right.
Right.
Uh, we've given notice that we're gonna be talking about this with conditions in the article.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, for now?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're still leaving it recommended pending until the eighteenth, and hopefully we'll be able to, ugh, something.
Yep. Yeah.
Article seven.
Yeah, I I'm just still thinking, I think arti- I think deliberation on on Article Six by us, uh, whatever it takes is a good idea, cuz, um, it's it's gonna be, um, I think extremely hard to do it twice, like Heather was saying, so, um, that that's that's important. Okay, uh, we're we're, A- Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer fifteen thousand dollars from accrued community preservation act historic reserve to fund the restoration of monuments and cannons in historic park and take any other action relative thereto. Uh, David, this is for the Vietnam Memorial, correct?
And and the other memorials around there.
And the other memorials.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
What do I?
Well, so it's, I just, I I guess.
This.
Vietnam's not there, they're restor- they're, uh, restoring, the Vietnam Memorial's not even yet to restore.
Yeah, so, so you have a civil war monument, you have a Spanish-American War monument, those, those need to be, uh, touched up.
Yep. Yep. So, so this has nothing to do with the Vietnam Memorial?
Correct.
Okay, so I just making sure, I was not clear, and I am clear now, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that at first.
Okay, yeah, make a motion, board, uh, rec- recommend Article Seven on the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, who's who's touching them up? Who's doing the work?
David, do you know who's doing the work?
No.
Yeah, so, um, again, this would have to be bid out.
At prevailing wage?
At prevailing wage.
Is fifteen thousand dollars gonna be enough?
It's, they can do as much as they can with, uh, with the money that they have. They've increased the 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 request, originally it was at, uh, ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Do we have a motion on that, or we just?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Yeah, I made a motion, yeah, yeah, Katie seconded.
I think I did. I was, I was considering whether I did or not, but then I kinda looked, I think I I took a cue from Tony, cuz Tony's like, she was, felt like she was mid-motion, so I was like, alright, I'm gonna keep going.
Yeah, nice second bet.
Um, planning board article, so this is Article Eight, I'm not gonna read all of this one, um, but it is, uh, the first portion of it, to see if the town will vote to amend Article Twenty-two Commercial Marijuana Establishment, Section twenty-two point four of the Town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws by adding the underlying text, and it says as follows, but I'm not gonna read it. Um, we've looked at it, if we wanna look at it again here for a minute, um, make sure we're.
We've actually talked about all of these things, yeah.
We have.
I just have one question, so, on the revised version, David, you have all zones, zones across town, districts left? In the original version from last week, it said applicable to all zones.
Mm-hmm.
Was that a planning board change, or?
That's, uh, council made that change.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, make a motion, the board recommend Article Eight for the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Seconded, is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, okay.
Yeah. All right, anything else on the town warrant, um?
Just to move to sign.
If we need a motion, yep, but I'll make a motion that the select board sign the, uh, upcoming, uh, the town warrant for the upcoming town meeting.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Why do we sign this one if it could possibly change before the meeting?
Um, so, we need to post tomorrow in order to make the deadline for the nineteenth.
Okay.
Um, so the the official posted one will have the recommendations that I've been able to gather.
Okay.
Um, the handout that we, uh, use at town meeting can be an updated, uh, handout that shows the recommendations of the finance committee, for example, their meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Gets worse as they go.
We have a few copies.
Yeah, there's five. They're just gonna keep coming. Are the red lights on at any of these cameras?
That one, cuz I haven't seen these at all, so it's.
Uh, there was. That one was before, she was.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I think there's somebody recording.
Okay, cuz I was like, I have not seen a red light, maybe it's just me.
I can't find this, but that doesn't make sense to me.
Whatever, maybe they like the back of her head. Passing back, oh, no, he's not done signing. I was looking at my other papers, cuz I don't wanna forget them.
One of the papers.
Oh, they're right here, I have, okay, I won't take them home, I promise.
Yes.
Oh.
What, you don't wanna take a full petition home, come on, it's good stuff.
Thank you. Not really. No, cuz then I'd have to come back.
Yeah, it's okay. Shove it in the overnight box, you know, it'll be fine.
So tomorrow, I'll go through this and make another copy of this, we'll make a couple of phone calls. Uh, fill fill out this part here, and then we'll take everything over to, uh, Lori.
Doing shots of candy then? You're doing shots of candy?
Do it before supper or your.
I'm here to pour.
That's not a good supper.
Will you be here as well?
No, okay.
Yeah, tomorrow I should be coming in, I'll leave at nine thirty.
So with those changes, what's the process, we'll have to meet before town meeting approval?
So I think David was talking about making the changes in the motion itself.
Mm-hmm.
So the warrant doesn't change, just the motion does, and then the select board's recommendation could change, or could become something, either recommend or not recommend. And then if you, if we would recommend or ask, make a motion to table it, we would do it at that point.
Well, there's nothing that says we can't meet, or we, you know, for clarification if we want to, so.
All right, um, new business, we are at the Veterans Service Agreement with Gardner?
Uh, can we take that off the, uh, agenda, I haven't have gotten the final confirmation from Gardner on this one, so.
Okay, we'll pass that over, do you wanna talk about it, uh, at, on the eighteenth eventually?
Uh, it looks like the agreement is gonna be pretty much the same as, uh, as, uh, we had with Westminster, there'll be no changes in terms of costs or services. Uh, there's just some question about the number of veterans that are eligible for benefits, uh, right now.
Okay.
Uh, sent some information over to Gardner, and they're digesting that.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear. Uh, next item is the banner vote, um, strung across Main Street.
So this is the Vietnam, uh, Veterans, uh, Memorial Committee, they would like to, they have a banner, and they would like permission to display that across Main Street. Uh, Kate Young brought up the very good point of what about the winter months when banners would not fare well? Uh, so I thought about that, and, uh, you could put conditions on, if you're going to allow this, put conditions on when it would be, uh, uh, displayed. Uh, so I thought about that, and uh, you could put conditions on, if you're going to allow this, put conditions on, when it would be uh uh displayed.
So, okay, so, um, this came in from from Bill Shea?
Yeah.
Um.
What is the banner for?
To uh hi- highlight the uh need for money for the Vietnam memorial, that's gonna be placed on common common.
And where, do you wanna hang it?
Wh- where are we hanging the field day sign, usually?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now the haunted hayride one's up.
Yep.
Yeah, the lions are the ones that hang the two signs, I did a sign and it epically failed, and I'm not touching a sign again across that street. It is so painful, um, but yeah, it's depending on how they make it, if they make it like the lions make it, it will fare much better. Um, their signs are very thin, and they're made out of like a, it looks like a nylon-y material, rather than a vinyl. Um, the vinyl does, it's that wind in that street right there, whips through and tore down my sign like three or four times, even after chopping it the ends off and putting in extra rammets with ex- yeah, it was an epic fail. Um, and that was in the spring, so I can only imagine with the wind whipping in the wintertime, because my my uh frozen asset sign take a beating. And they are, like, a bunch of them have become trash, and they're only up for a few months in the wintertime, it's the freezing and the wind and the ice and everything kills banners, so. I would just, whatever they're going to do, be very mindful, because if a banner comes down in the middle of sixty-eight in Main Street, depending on the time it comes down, it could cause some serious accidents and a fatality, so, um. Luckily, when mine came down, the eight times it did, or however many times, it didn't cause an accident, but it could have. So I just wanna make sure they're aware of what they're about to put up, and be mindful of that, cause again, if you're doing the vinyl, it does not go well, especially in the winter months. And I don't know how it will go in the winter months anyway.
Do we require, so, I know in other communities I've worked, and they've required insurance to put a banner up on the road.
Yeah, typically you do that with uh outside agencies, uh, this is a town committee, so that we would be covered by our own insurance.
Okay.
Putting it in a different place, for example, could they put it, granted, it's not, has the vis- visibility of Main Street coming across, but on the Church Common, like, where the uh memorial would be anyway. Could they put that banner up there?
I, I do, don't know why they put it, yeah.
Or a sign, whatever it is, yeah.
Well, they have their sign already where the banner, where it's gonna go, I think they're looking for more advertising.
Mm-hmm.
Well, why don't we, why don't we say, like, put it up for a month or something, and see how it goes, and then we readdress it, just to make sure there's nothing going on, I'm not saying something bad can't happen in a month, but I think we wanna do everything we can to support the fundraising effort here for the Vietnam memorial, so, what do you think of that, sort of bound it with a a month, that sound okay to everybody?
Maybe, yeah, once.
I think, I think, um, Bill Shea has a lot of experience with this kind of sign, and I know the people who hang these type of signs have a lot of experience with them.
Okay.
And a sign can fall down at any time, whether it be spring, some, summer, winter, or fall.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure the sign will be maintained, I'm sure it'll be taken care of, if it needs restringing, I'm confident we'll get restrung and hung up and maintained by the powers that be.
Mm-hmm.
Who have access to the equipment and an interest in the project. I would suggest we just let it go.
Um, ca- can we, uh, uh, I, again, I'm totally fine with this, but I I think, um, based on this conversation, we we probably need to ask Bill a couple questions.
Okay, he's gonna be meeting with you on your, on the eighteenth, because we'll have the uh bids for the Mu- Vietnam memorial.
Okay, that sounds like a good time to finalize this.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? Cause that's what we're gonna do.
That's our next meeting at the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
October eighteenth.
Okay.
Yep, you can give him a, just give him a heads up that, you know, we just had a couple questions, absolutely supportive, but, you know, just wanna make sure we're
Yeah.
we're, you know, I don't wanna pretend like we're asking questions we wouldn't ask somebody else to, so, you know, it's uh, it's a new thing for us here, and we have to ask these questions, he'll understand.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe we have enough money already to cover the the project.
Yeah.
We'll have that information once the bids are open.
Yeah, okay.
What's the, what's the new thing you're looking to, Dan?
That that it's a new request from them, for, you know, versus the lions putting up, you know, field day sort of thing.
Uh.
Got it, just wanna make sure.
Hmm.
Okay, uh, so old business is town center improvement project, uh, easements serv- survey, so David wanna, I I know we've we've talked a lot about this, and um, so, you, why don't you just talk about it a little?
So I met with four families today who had concerns or wanted to understand the process a little bit, um, more th- uh, a little better. So they had concerns about what kinds of uh damage would be done to their driveways, to their landscaping, uh, to fences, um, and whether the, it would affect the parking plan for at least one set of rental properties. Uh, everybody was was positive, uh, looking forward to getting the project done, um, and just wanted to know what what to make of the the charts that they had in front of them. Um, I did say that uh we would um meet with the select board and ask for a uh public meeting so that people could uh hear it all at the same time from the select board. Um, somebody suggested a walking tour of the project, and I thought that that was something that uh you may wanna consider.
We may, we we talked about that early, uh, early in the project as well, about a walking tour, I think the time of year didn't sort of work out the way we needed it to, but the the problem with the the walking tours, there's so many properties, it's hard to, you know, versus having them all out in the plan, and maybe having some assistance from an engineer here too, it's hard to get enough done during that, so.
Right.
Um, anyway, so if you'll recall, we we've talked a little bit about this, um, you know, that we wanted to, after the letters went out a week ago, a week and a half ago, somewhere in that range, two weeks ago, we wanted to see what sort of responses we 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 had, before we decided what the next step was gonna be, whether or not that was individual meetings or more. There have been some additional people who have reached out to me with some questions as well, as well as at least one party, maybe two, that have reached out to the engineering firm, uh, T E C, about some questions about their fencing, uh, railings and stuff on their property, so, I I think it's clear now, after we've given it a little bit of time, that there are enough questions that we should just do what David said here, it's just set a uh, uh, public uh meeting to to give all that information out at once.
Hmm.
So, you know, we, some, sounds like maybe sometime in November. We've got special town meeting coming up, and, um, you know, after that, um, we can, so I guess this is up for discussion here, do we wanna do it? And it doesn't even have to be a select board meeting, it could be a town center committee meeting, I'm I'm just, we're just talking here, but, do we wanna do it as part of a agenda item for a select board meeting, it may take a while.
I would do it separate.
Yeah, I think so too, cause then you gotta gauge when people are supposed to come in or not, so I agree.
And then do we have a bigger place that we'd be able to meet with folks?
I think the senior senate might be alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, is there a way to project on?
There is.
Okay.
Yep. I even, even really just need to put up plan on easel sort of thing, that's what we've done as well, so.
And we can broadcast that and tape it too?
We can.
Is that what you're saying?
So we'll get more.
It'll be the the uh committee, the town center committee that will host the meeting, so to speak?
I don't know, I guess it could be, or it doesn't, it could even be, um.
Yeah.
A joint meeting, or no?
Is there gonna be a need, is there gonna be a need to have a majority of the select board at this meeting?
Yeah. That's what we're discussing, I don't, a need, no.
Okay.
Um.
It's more of an informational meeting, so there's no.
It should proba- I think it should probably go to the town, the town center.
There's no votes and laws on it, yeah.
Yeah, so the mess- the message I convey to the four families that I met, and I've got more appointments since later this week,
Committee.
is that the select board wants to work with the property owners in order to, A, achieve the upgrade to the road, but also do it in a, in a way that neighborly and not gonna be uh annoying or destructive or to the to the townspeople.
Why not, why not have a combination then, um, your committee, as well as s- representation, if we didn't wanna require all of us being there, or we c- could come and go, or whatever?
Yeah, I think we c- we could just, we could.
Have a joint re- representation, yeah.
Call it a joint meeting, and then if everybody wants to come, they can come, if they don't, they don't, you know, we'll just sort of have an informational session.
Yeah.
But, but, um, so, so yeah, let's pick a date.
Okay, so, the people will be looking for assurances from you all, um, that this project is not going to make their lives uh difficult.
We're not gonna lie to them, you know, they're gonna have a construction project going in front of their house, so we're just gonna be clear about all that, so, um, it's an absolute betterment that's costing them really nothing, so.
They're. Yeah. Right.
We'll just be uh upfront about that.
Do we have an engineer present too?
Yeah. So I'll have to check into that, um, you know, the 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 availability of, uh, of them, so I should probably do that.
When abouts is that project actually, is it actually starting?
Looks like next fall at this point.
Yeah, I know, when fall is, when, what do you think, are we thinking of August?
It's, the bids I think are July, and the bids are July.
November first, until December twenty-first.
That gotta be before September.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
The bids are July, and then the NASTO T takes a certain amount of time to get insurances and bonds, and you have to go to approval, the, whatever, so, I don't know.
Yeah.
And will it be done before winter sets in, is that how?
On or September?
No, I don't think so, it's gonna go into the following season, so they're gonna do a lot of the prep work, um, in in the, you know, during the end of the construction season for next year, and then
Uh. Mm.
How?
Mm, mm.
most of the work goes into the following year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the spring of the fall, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
So basically they do like all the site work, and like the side work, and like the stuff that they can, and then they come through like, and just voom in the spring and finish it, okay.
That's right.
Alright.
Alright, so I'm thinking November eighth, second Monday in November.
Sounds lovely.
So, to be clear, that's gonna be a, an official select board meeting?
There is no clear yet, so we're deciding that right now.
Well, I was suggesting that it not be.
Well, I guess my question is, is there any issues where you would need a majority of the select board there to make a decision on something or two?
No.
Okay.
But we could, we, I think it would be a good gesture to have a joint meeting between the select board and the town center committee, because that's what it is, it's a town project, so we could, we could make it as that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And again, nothing changes, if for some reason, three of us can't go because of family issues, if the meeting doesn't get affected by it, it's just, you know, there's just no quorum, and it's not official, but it's
Right. Right.
it's still the informational, you know, session it was supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'd say we list it as both a joint town center committee and, um, select board meeting.
Hmm. Sounds good.
I'm fine with these.
Yep, Mondays are a select board meeting, so I don't plan anything, just.
Okay. Heather's fine with it too, I just spoke for her.
I'm fine.
Okay. Good to know. I said she doesn't have the baby.
Oh, right.
Yeah, cause that's getting close.
We have a joint meeting on November eighth, just so you know, so if you're, if you're available, what are we gonna do at town center?
November eighth?
But don't have the baby that day, you're.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can make it, it it's a joint meeting, but it's, um, the meeting is not affected by the presence or or non-presence of a quorum.
Okay.
Or the achievement of a quorum. Okay, so, good enough for that, for now, David?
Yep.
Alright, uh, town center, I'm sorry, uh, town administrator report, do you have anything you wanna?
Uh, we met last week, I gave you an update of what was going on, it's been all town meeting all the time at this point.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay, um.
I think I have a question.
Yep.
As always. Um, I think it was actually, David, you had sent out the, I think is one of the things for tonight, the email for the Hubbardson cell tower update. And one of the questions Mike Moriarty was asking was relevant to the permit fees being waived.
Right, so, uh, we heard from Ryan this morning, who typically we waive, um, municipal building permit fees, so, I'm happy with that.
Okay, and in this case, would it theoretically have been a cost that would have been, uh, divvied up amongst all the towns, or would it have been something that was covered by the grant anyway?
It would have come from the grant.
Okay, so, in the past, when it comes from a grant, do we generally waive it as well, or do we say, if it's coming out of a grant, then we're gonna charge the building fee? Because it's a little, it's a little bit different, it's not like CPC funds, right, and we're just taking more money from CPC to pay a different pocket, it's literally.
Or capital expenditure.
Yeah, but it's literally money coming from an outside source that would cover the cost of it, and do we know what the cost would be approx?
For the, uh, the.
For a building fee for this project?
Yeah, so it'd be based upon the value of the, of the, of the project, and we had a quote of uh, four hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars, so, that, that fee would be substantial. Um, and I'm not sure that there's money in the grant to cover it.
Okay.
Um.
So we don't know if there's enough in the grants or?
I don't know.
Okay. I guess that would just make a difference in my mind, right, like if the grant covered all of the costs, including the cost for the permit fees, then we would be doing a disservice not to charge to the grant.
I I hear you.
The costs.
Um, we have, we must have a multiplier, right, that we can figure out what that value is? There's, is it the same as if somebody's gonna build a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house?
Right. Well, it's vertical, cause it's, um, vertical construction as opposed to horizontal, so, um, it depends on what that, that fee is based upon, if it's based upon square footage, uh, the fee wouldn't be that much, if it's based upon the value, it would be substantial.
Okay.
Alright, well, how can we find that out?
I can look into it.
Alright.
And then can we find out if the grant would in fact have enough to cover that?
Yeah.
And and really whether the grant, grant language could have that in too, you know, from for what the grant covers. Cause there's a chance like the, the, the regional dispatch could have to cover it too, you know, and we just don't know how it's worded. Could say the the the, you know, the grantee or the grant, yeah, has to be responsible for it, so, alright, we got a couple questions, I guess.
Yeah. Alright, I'll look into it, I'll have the information for us at the next meeting.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions on the, uh, town administrator report?
Nope.
Okay, uh, policy res- review, we don't have any, matters not recently anticipated by the chair, I don't have any, does anyone have anything else they wanna bring up?
Uh, we have, um, from Travis Brown, a, uh, a hire of uh, d- d- employee f- uh, temporary employment for, uh, class D and class B driving and uh, uh, equipment operation. Uh, we also have a, uh, rec-, uh, resignation from the, one of the two nu- new hires down at BPW.
So this.
Already?
Yep.
And this is replacing that?
This is supplementing that, not replacing it. So, we need to give another body in.
Okay, it's good, because you said temporary hire.
Person under. Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, the person who resigned resigned for family medical reasons.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be kept.
Hmm.
Okay.
That's unfortunate.
So you need a motion, but what kind of a motion then?
I I don't need a motion unless you're gonna say, unless you say no.
Oh, you don't, oh.
Oh.
I will not say no.
Anyone else wanna say?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it.
Yep.
Should I look over your shoulder?
And I did have a question after we're done with this, so, let's not move ahead.
Okay.
Not on that though, different question.
Go ahead.
Alright, Chris is all sat down there?
Well, who knows, but he can always bring it up.
Did, have we gotten anywhere with the whole Bella training and uh, ID thing that I brought up last meeting?
Yeah, so I, uh, talked to the chief of police, uh, he has, um, he has, uh, he's comfortable with the town clerk, uh, keeping Bella on and employing her. I talked to the town clerk, and she reckons that Bella can, uh, uh, work the, um, the town meeting. Um, I have, uh, emailed Bella, and she has not responded to me.
But what about the extra training that was part of the the conversation? Yeah, the, yeah, conversation, there you go, thank you, Heather.
Well, it's part of the agreement, it wasn't part of the conversation, it was part of the agreement.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, the agreement, right.
Yeah. So what, training, like, cause she's asking for, to tell her what the training is.
Right.
And no one's responding to her of what the training is, so that's, yeah.
I'm telling you that I've reached out to her, and she's not coming back and communicating with me.
Yeah. Okay. Alright.
So if you see her, if you could direct her to me.
Okay.
So you have, you have training suggestions for her?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Conflict resolution.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
Alright, so there is something as long, once she reaches out to you, okay, alright, that was my question, alright.
Yeah.
And I just had one, one thing to add. Um, with regards to the special town meeting, David, I know we had talked about a number of meetings ago, trying to use the code red reverse nine one one system that Mike Moriarty has at dispatch. Can we do an announcement? Can we do an announcement just to let people, remind people of the special town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
A couple days in advance? Might as well use the free phone call. See if we can't drum up a quorum.
Yep.
Yeah, especially a quorum.
I just need um clarity on the meeting schedule here. Are we meeting next Monday, or are we meeting prior to town election on Tuesday, I mean town meeting on Tuesday, or are we meeting both?
The eighteenth.
We're meeting on the eighteenth.
So that's Monday, we're meeting for our normal six thirty select board meeting, and then not prior to our annual town meeting, the next day we're meeting uh just for town meeting.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, any further matters? And public press question answers? Nothing?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Uh s- it is not debatable, we will vote, uh all in favor?
Bye.
Yeah.
Bye.
Yes, we are adjourned at seven forty.